I call the meeting to order. Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and are transmitted to the Rona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
How's it going?
Very well.
Fantastic. Does anybody have any committee reports?
No.
Anybody go anywhere, do anything?
Well, we only, obviously, we went to school boards.
We did go to school boards. We all went.
We all went.
We did. First time, I think, in Cedar Grove history, we were part of the 100% club.
100%.
Get a little sicker and everything. So, joking aside, it was actually a lot of fun. It really, it's good to...
I learned a lot.
It is. You know, you stop and you learn and you get to talk to people from other districts and...
Yeah. It was great.
Some of us talked to more people than others, but, you know.
Some of us like to talk.
Absolutely. Yes, they do.
So, the School Boards is an association of all the school boards in the state of New Jersey, and so what they do over four days is they have, what, like, 30?
I don't even know how many workshops.
Workshops, like, every day, there's 30 workshops every day.
At least 30.
And they range from any topic that you can possibly imagine, and so we all kind of, like, try to pick specific topics and just...
I would say it's like teachers convention, but geared towards Board of Ed. I mean, the exhibition floor is set up with, you had the food vendors, you had technology, I mean, they had everything, so it was cool. And then the sessions we went to were specifically geared towards what we need to learn and what we need to know for our specific committees, so I thought it was great.
I think also, a great thing of it is you get to interact with people from different districts, and it really, it's eye-opening. You see how different approaches that the different districts take.
And the great thing is you can go up and ask in any, you know, go up in any district that you want if there's something you're interested in.
Right.
And to just have a conversation with them, which was, you know, it's really very formative.
No, I thought so. And I thought the keynote speaker for Wednesday, that was...
It was awful.
It was one of the parents from...
Ian Hockley.
From Sandy Hook.
From Sandy Hook parent.
And he talked about his son and what had happened that day and everything, and what he's done as a result of it, and how he's carried on this movement and...
He's done a beautiful thing with such a tragedy, so...
Yeah, and I think when he talked, the room was...
It was tough to listen to.
It was tough to go through, yeah. It was really tough.
Not a dry eye.
Yes.
Nope. So, anyway, it was well worth it, and it was fun, and a little team bonding on our part, which is always good as well.
Yes.
So, that's that. So, moving on, we have board presentations, and I think I'm gonna just mix up the, or move the presentations a little bit in the interest of getting our students out the door sooner rather than later, so I think we are gonna go ahead and we're gonna start with the Alzheimer's Association Award for the CGHS fundraising efforts, and Mr. Cardnell is not here. Okay, oh, there he is. I'm like, where did he go? I'm like, I'm like, where is he? Like, okay, wanna stand up? I'm like, where'd he go?
I don't really have anything formally prepared, but I guess...
We'll go it over again. So, you're on the camera.
You're on the phone, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I guess I'd just like to first thank Mr. Mangilius, his idea to, you know, have our remaining kids from last year's sport management class recognized at a Board of Ed meeting, and we started running a fundraiser in our sport management class three years ago. The first year we ran it, we raised about $4,700. Last year, we ran it, we raised just over 10 grand. We donated that money to the Progeria Research Foundation, and last year's class, we decided to donate the money to Alzheimer's. And one of the, one of the kids in the class who graduated, you know, registered our event with the Alzheimer's Association, and when it was all said and done, we raised about $14,330, which we, within, you know, a couple of weeks of the event, were able to write the check, you know, all proceeds went to Alzheimer's. And Chamberlain and Lauren, who are here now, are two of the remaining current seniors that were juniors last year. They actually were two of the team leaders of the five teams in the class, so, you know, it's nice that, for them to be able to be here. I know Chamberlain, you know, did a really nice job with sponsorships and had some really good raffles that we were able to give away. Lauren's group also, you know, obviously raised a lot of money with sponsorships, raffles. She in particular was responsible for editing videos that we posted on our social media account to promote the event. Mrs. Dai, I know Will was in the class as well, did a great job helping out with promotions, game day events, so on and so forth, so it was really a collaborative effort. Everything really goes on, on the kids, and they will, I'm not just saying this, it was all them. I didn't really do anything, I just kinda told them what to do, and they kinda got it done. So, we got an email in September that said, "Hey, by the way, you were the number-one fundraising group for Alzheimer's for 2019."
That's fabulous.
So, they had this, they had this super formal award ceremony at Monster Mini Golf, and they presented us with, like, awards and plaques and, and, like, I guess a medal or whatever, but it was, you know, do it, obviously, for the recognition, you do it for the experience, for the charity, but, you know, especially when we could recognize our kids and show what a great job they've done in the way they've represented our school and our district, it's special, so, thanks for, thanks for having us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You guys have to go up and get a picture.
I'll get a picture.
Mr. Cardnell, absolutely, yes. Yay.
Great job, guys.
Yeah, hold the, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
A little away from the mic. There we go.
That's pretty amazing.
That's pretty, that's a lot of money.
Absolutely, it is.
It's a lot of money.
That's crazy.
Absolutely.
Do what you wish.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that is. So, before we get to our next board presentation, which then I'll go back to the top, if anybody who wants to kinda go, 'cause it's a school night, it's all good. Have a good evening, thank you for coming, congratulations.
Good night.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Congratulations.
She's on Instagram twice.
That's great.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. No pressure there, Mr. Kenny. School self-assessment, HIV grades.
Think about that dollar amount.
I'm sure you're gonna make that exciting. $14,300 worth of excitement, right?
Chip fall out.
That's great.
That class gives the kids such great exposure, too, isn't it?
Yes, oh, yes.
My daughter ended up majoring in, her concentration is in sports management, and that class catapulted her to it. I mean, it's a great class, and he's, I mean, he teaches it phenomenally.
Yeah.
That's great.
He's the real deal with that.
Yeah, he's gonna be the deal. Sorry.
Okay, that's right. Good evening. Every year, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act designates a stipulation where school districts have to report on their HIV grades or harassment intimidation and bullying grades for a prior year, so this is actually for the 2017-18 school year, for which we submitted our grades during the 18-19 school year, for which the state then finally approves, and we get to report in the 19-20 school year. So, there you go. That's how it works.
So, how are the grades determined?
They are determined when the school safety team comprised of the principal, anti-bullying specialist, select teachers, and a parent representative in each building gets together and looks over a particular rubric that's given to us by the state every year. It is a sort of pseudo questionnaire, asking whether the school has done X, Y, and Z. Therefore, you're allowed to give yourself points, zero to three, on a scale based on the particular scale of zero to three. Zero being you didn't do anything, three being you exceeded a particular set of questions that's being asked of you. The scores are then compared to what I submit as the anti-bullying coordinator on what's called an HIV ITP report. It's through the state website. Then the state then releases its final grades, if it makes any adjustments to our grades that we submit. So, oop, kinda knew that that was gonna happen here. All right, so, let me kinda go into the formatting procedure here. I'll use my pointer. So, as far as the high school and moving down, we have, for HIV programs and approaches, they've actually went up in the, in the following year. Training also went up. We stayed the same for other staff instruction transition, and we maxed out on that particular category. Curriculum and instruction stayed the same there. HIV personnel stayed the same there, and school-level reporting went down a bit, but that's because of some discrepancies to where we may or may not have had all of the information that we needed to report in the 10-day timeframe. And the investigative procedure, we stayed the same there. So, overall, as you can see in your packets, the reporting, let me see, if I can go ahead and fix this, but does it look like it? The reporting should show that the high school did go up from the previous year. If I could kinda look on a little bit here. Yeah, so we did go up in the high school grades. Middle school actually maxed out. So, they maxed out at 78 points. They continue to do a lot of different type of instructional strategies with the staff, with the, thank you. With the staff as well as the students, so they do a nice job building up on those questionnaires. North End as well. They stayed the same in those points indicated. And South End went up a little bit, and the discrepancy between the two buildings, usually they're the same, but they had some other type of initiatives that they put forward in South End as opposed to North End, therefore the two-point difference there. Some of the improvement initiatives that we're working on, cultural awareness projects at the middle school, Panther Praise, peer leaders as well, we're continuously using Safe Schools Online Training, we'll be using the same forums for Strauss S.M.A. that they have done for us, but also this year, we'll be using the MyK12 HIV Reporting Software, which is a new initiative related to the strategic plan as well. I was asked also to talk to you, are there any questions on the HIV grade before I move on?
So, in 2021, we'll see our scores for last year? Is that how that'll work?
Yeah. So, I was asked to also report tonight on some of the social and emotional learning initiatives that we are doing in the 19-20 school year. We're lucky enough to have the funding to support a program called Silas and the expansion of it into all four different buildings. Silas is an interactive, online gaming approach to doing social stories with kids and students. Some high school students might like the novelty of playing a little, a game format, but it is kind of on a childish level. However, we still put it out there for them to use. But it does, it's avatar-based, where they control the emotions, the words, and they actually use a voice recognition where they're actually speaking and they get to record the situation and then play it back to see if they did role-play the right way to handle a certain situation. That's what the Silas program is. We've also increased our grant funding to support a second licensed clinical social worker in the district that's contracted, that's not an actual employee, that's contracted through an agency. The reason being is if the grant funds dry up, that means the person would go away, so we wanna make sure that, you know, we have the luxury of also moving those funds around if need be as well. So, we employed 27 hours per week of enhanced counseling services for identified students that are in need to be emotionally readily available to learn. Those are designated through the guidance counselors and principals and given parental permission to start that program. We have online coursework that will be rolling out for the staff from the NJ DOE on social emotional learning, and that will deal with not only the social emotional well-being of the students, but also the social emotional well-being of themselves. Because if we're not, if we're not well ourselves, we tend to not be well in the classroom, and it kinda feeds, the kids kinda feed off there as well. We have a partnership with Montclair State Center for Autism and Early Childhood Health to provide services for students and families, so that's a carryover service that actually has family sessions for students that are identified that need this service, because what we're finding is the families need help at home as well, and it does carry over into the school, so if we could help both sides of the equation, it's better off for us in the classroom. At the Cedar Grove High School, in grades nine, 11, and 12, in the health curriculum, there are units that address social, emotional, and mental health well-being. They are done strategically placed within those particular curriculum. At the middle school, they do social skills lunch groups for various grade levels, they're doing presentations such as the Mikey Fallen presenter, Sidekicks, which is an anti-bullying program, and Peer Leaders, they meet with the underclassmen, and again, as I mentioned prior, they're doing cultural sensitivity training. So, those are just some of the SLE components in those upper levels. In the elementary, we have Zippy's Friends, it's a program taken from Montclair State. We've had our guidance counselor train. We are the only current, I would imagine, Montclair State is the only current person to train on this program, and it's based off of England, England's program, they brought it over, Montclair State happens to have the sole rights to train for this program. It's designated children's five to seven, and again, helps children cope when they're feeling sad, angry. Currently, the kindergarten students have recently just started this program, and it has to do with a puppet called Zippy, and, you know, Zippy goes through different stages in his life, and deals with grief and loss, and eventually, we deal with the loss of Zippy.
Oh, geez.
But they go through that. That's, I believe, stage five in Zippy's Friends.
I hope no one's watching at home.
You give it away.
I know.
What's that?
So, you give it away. What happens to Zippy?
If the kids are watching.
Right.
There's no kid watching.
If any kindergarten, if any kindergarten kids are up right now watching, watching this presentation, I'm sorry, I ruined it.
Sorry.
In grades one to four...
Zippy's fine.
He's fine. In grades one to four, they're using a second step program. It's a violence prevention curriculum, it teaches, does teach social emotional skills, and then you see a couple of units that were pointed out by our guidance counselor, empathy training, impulse control, and anger management. So, we are incorporating a lot of social emotional learning components throughout the buildings, some that you may see or may have students talk about, others are on the back end as well, you know, helping out individual students that are identified, so, any questions on that?
I just had a question. So, the two people that do the licensed clinical social workers, are they the same people that come repeatedly throughout the year, or do they rotate them out, or?
No, it's the same.
It's the same people?
Same two people.
So, the kids are getting used to seeing the same...
Yeah, yeah, they're designated to a specific LCSW, this particular student that's identified, and they work with them throughout the year.
Fantastic. Okay, great.
And these programs here, like Zippy and the other ones, is that, is that for everyone, or is that just for people who are...
Zippy's is all kindergarten level, and one through four is all, both South End and North End.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what? Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. by Mr. Pearson and Ms. Mish, so, right? That's what's next.
Oh, that's your maiden name?
This is my maiden name.
Yeah, that's so confusing.
I know, that's why I paused for a second. I was like, why is that? Okay. I'm like, well, that's why I paused, and I'm like, okay, right, I got you.
They do call you Mish, because I...
Oh, that's hysterical.
No, because I've been in the hallways, and they call you Mish.
I'm like, that's so funny. Bye.
Yeah, I still call her, her maiden name.
Yeah, of course.
The kids weren't watching for Mr. Kenny's. This would be where they need to come back in.
You're crying over Zippy right now.
If there's anything kids are interested in, it's testing scores. I've learned that in my years of education. Well, thank you for being here tonight, thanks for letting us go through this with you. Wanted to just talk to you about how the results came out, last year's assessment. Last year was the first year that, it wasn't Park, it was the NJSLA, different type of assessment, now completely covering the New Jersey standards. We tested everybody, three to 10th grade, both ELA and math. We're gonna show you a year-to-year results, last year and this year, of course. Last year followed this particular rule, next year changes it a little bit, and Janine will explain more of this when we get to the math part. They're gonna be testing from three to 10th grade next year, but it changes into algebra. It's, third grade demonstrate proficiency in ELA and Algebra I on the NJLSA assessment, or one of the alternate assessments, which would be the second pathway, or the third pathway where they could use a portfolio. So, three different ways to show proficiency on those particular, you know, subject matters. Like Park, NJSLA covers five levels. The levels that we're most interested in would be, and where's the little, there we go, four and five. You'll hear referred to tonight as meeting and exceeding. So, we jump right into English, and first thing we wanna show this year is the idea of how many students we have in each grade level. And we had some very large changes, what made this important this year. Very prominent in fifth grade, where it went from 110 students last year to 128 students this year. And in sixth grade, 127 students last year, and it dropped down to 109. The big jumps, I would think, though, is third grade, went from 123 students down to 82 students. This would have some influence on the results across the board, and that's important to think about as we go through this. So, we get right into ELA. There's a lot to digest in this particular slide, but music helps. It's like 100%, always.
Yeah.
In this case, in this chart, it's broken up by performance level, and I guess the most important aspect, become here, meeting and exceeding. And there's a lot of good results when we look at them here, when we look at them this particular way, but I wanna give you a chance to really look at that particular chart before I move on and talk about the highlights of what we did last year in ELA. Historically, English has always been able to carry its own in terms of test scores. There are problems always, in some grade levels more than others, but what the numbers need to show you, and what I thought was very important this year, if we look at just meeting and exceeding in this case, oops, I went too far. Grade eight jumped over the two-year period, 12.4%, from 61.8 percentage of their students passing in 2018, in this case, to 74.2% of their students passing. Ninth grade went from, in 2018, 54.3% students passing to 70%, 70.1% passing, which is an increase of 15.8%, which is, that's a very large jump when it comes down to it. I wanna go back one second. Now, things on this chart that are important to show you, is just the idea of what gains they made in hitting the highest level, which is in this case, exceeding. Sixth grade increased from 2018 to 2019 by 18%. In 2018, just exceeding level, they had 12.6% of their students. 2019, they had 20.2% of their students at exceeding, at the highest level. Ninth grade had the highest jump of all. In 2018, they had only 3.9% of their students, that would be right there, 3.9% of their students exceeding expectations. In 2019, they had 26.6% of their students exceeding expectation, which is a really large jump by itself. In 10th grade, in 2018, they had 12.4% of their students exceeding expectations. In 2019, they had 21.1% of their students exceeding. We look at numbers, so we don't take consideration there, if the numbers are raised in that particular level at exceeding, it kinda lowers them everywhere else, and it's important to think about that as we digest these scores and move forward. When we get back to meeting and exceeding, what this chart doesn't show is some of the, what some of the individual teachers in the district really did, and I don't like to break it down any further than grade level, but what this chart doesn't show us are the nine district teachers between three and 10th grade who had 90% or more of their students meet or exceed expectations in their classes. It's nine teachers. Two of these nine teachers had 100% of all their students, 100% met or exceeded expectations. I find that very important. It's one of the first times I saw a class or a grade level have 100% of their students in one teacher's class meet or exceed expectations, and it's a really nice statistic to think about as we move forward, especially through everything. Now, our initiatives, change them up a little bit from what we usually do. The continued implementation of student-centered differentiated instruction in all grade levels. And how exactly do we do this? I think the best way is number two. The further analysis of assessment data determines students' needs in order to drive instruction. The key ingredient in this would be LinkedIn. So much information, sometimes too much information, if you've seen all the LinkedIn particular charts that they have, it's a lot to digest, but there's some in there, broken down by cohort, broken down by grade level, very important to look at, especially if we're looking at ways to increase the proficiency of students reading and writing. But I find the most important one is number three. Cross-curricular alignment of the New Jersey Student Learning Center for English Language Art into other subject areas. And in the end, the goal is always to establish the resounding truth that all teachers of any subject are also, not just their own subject, but they're also teachers of English. Every teacher's a reading teacher. Teachers teach social studies, business, science, technology, world language, health, art, and music. They use a wide variety of informational and, a complex informational text that students read in order to extract information as well as to form opinions. It's a basic... It's the basis of reading. But what do students do with these facts and ideas and concepts and opinions that they have? But they write about them, or they research more, which means that every teacher's also a writing teacher, be it informative writing, argumentative writing, or most importantly, any type of research-based writing, which goes on in every single class. I was in a classroom last week, second grade students doing research on blue whales. Second grade, in preparation of that. And not only were they doing it, but they were so excited about it. If we could continue that burn that students have at that grade level, and this wasn't even in English, this was science. But the idea of connecting all the dots, all the subjects, and letting the teachers know and accept it, we're all reading and writing teachers. To me, that's the best way, and the one advantage that English has over a lot of the other subjects, is that it's integrated in so well. And the last thing we're going to do, and we do it all the time, is continued professional development to address reading and writing skills. Couldn't be more important. Math has sent out students, I'm sorry, teachers all year for different types of PD, and English has stepped up this year, and we've been sending out teachers, find very particular, but good and like worthwhile writing instruction, which is what they're all looking for. And that brings us to mathematics.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am, I will be speaking about our results from the NJSLA math, which we have come to affectionately refer to it as NJSLAM, just to abbreviate that a little bit. I am, I'm excited about this one tonight, and I love me some data, but I love data that shows a lot of evidence of growth. And I'm also excited because there's a lot that we anticipated over the last year. I remember standing here last year, and we saw some dips in certain areas, and we didn't wait until June and July this past summer to make the necessary changes in our programming and instruction to start off the school year to strong. So, there's a lot that we anticipated, and I'm excited to share some of those things with you. Of course, just, just as Bart did, we wanted to, I wanted to start by referring to some of the, there we go, some of the, the changes in, in how many students are taking the test. Of course, we have enrollment changes, but I do want to bring your attention to Algebra II. The interesting thing, and this is the biggest difference between testing in language arts and math, is once students are split into the standard and accelerated tracks in seventh grade, you will never have an entire population in the same grade level in one math class. You will have Algebra I students split between grade eight and grade nine, geometry students split between grade nine and grade 10, and, and so on. And because they eliminated the grade 11 test this past year for Algebra II, we're missing about half of the, the population here. And there are some thoughts floating around, not quite sure if there are rumors, but there, I, I think something that has been brought up is the possibility of having a ninth and 11th grade test, but these are just, you know, this is just conversation that's, that's out there, and, and instead of the, the 10th grade test. So, when you're comparing 2017 to 18 to 19, that's going to skew the data because you're not looking at the entire picture of instruction for that reason. So, just as Bart presented this almost overwhelming picture of all of the scores over, over the last few years, I want to use this chart in particular to highlight a few things, highlight some areas of growth, and also highlight some areas that we have acknowledged need some more attention, because that's what this is about. Nothing's ever going to be perfect. We always want to be aware of where we need to make some changes. So, first, I want to acknowledge that from last year to this year, we have gone up in exceeding expectations in almost every grade. The same thing with meeting expectations, and I have another chart. In fact, I'll, I'll show you that right now. So, between 2018 and 2017, just our overall population of students who are passing the exam in math has gone up in every grade level, except for one, except for algebra. I'm going to discuss some things in algebra for our plans this year. But that's some significant improvement, that we are moving forward and we are growing, and when more students are passing this test every year. Something that I, I want to highlight as an area of focus, a couple areas of focus, is if we look diagonally. Diagonally gives us the cohort of students, the same students who are moving up the ranks. So, I'm going to, to show you two specific areas that have been a focus of our discussion over the last couple of years. So, if I look at the grade five 2017, as they go into grade six and then to grade seven, there is a little bit of a dip from five to six. We have seen this as a pattern over the last few years. We also see a little bit of a dip from eighth grade to ninth grade, ninth grade to 10th grade. Here is what's happening. And one of our themes for the math department this year in grades five to 12 is building bridges. We have a bridge between fifth and sixth grade. We have a bridge between seventh, eighth, and ninth grade because the programs change. Something that we already anticipated and had a conversation about from fifth to sixth grade is that while the students are going from Go Math to Connect It Math, which is a more investigative and more exploratory-type program, the students maybe are not quite ready for it. So, at the end of the, the school year for our summatives, and also at the beginning of the year for our math department meeting, I had a sit-down with the grade five teachers, and we already have a plan to rearrange some of the topics. They are bringing some of, for example, the heavy computation and operations with fractions. They are bringing that to the front of the year in terms of curriculum, and going to spiral it. And we also have an idea to pull from some alternate supplements on the suggestion of our consultants of Conquer Math. And we are also looking to take some of the topics that are introduced at the beginning of sixth grade and, and sprinkle it on the curriculum in math in fifth grade in May and June, so that there is a little bit more of a transition. So, transitions and building bridges. In terms of eighth grade and the rest of high school, I have some specifics that I will talk about when I mention some of the, the district-wide initiatives. Now, the next series of graphs, I'm very excited to share because I believe this is the first year that I'm sharing these graphs. The importance of these charts are twofold. Number one, these are the exact most important pieces of data that we, as a department, use to analyze our test scores. Let me explain what some of these things are. First of all, all of, if we look at the number line at the bottom, these are all the questions. Each question has a standard specifically tied to it. So, for example, 4.0A dot two, that's grade four, Operations and Algebraic Thinking, standard two. We can see where our students scored, what percentage of them got these questions correct. The state line in blue, that's the state average. Now, this is from 2017, and you can see we have maybe 25, anywhere from 10 to 25% of the data underneath our state average. I will tell you that in 2017, grade three, grade four, and grade five all looked the same, meaning that maybe 25% of our correct questions were underneath the state average. So, let's fast forward to 2017, excuse me, 2019. All of our questions are correct and above the state average, and not just on the state average above. And I will tell you that the grade three, grade four, and grade five graphs look exactly like this. So, there, there's, I'm a visual person. You have questions below, and now you have questions above. Once again, in terms of using these graphs, in the beginning of the year, when we sit down with our individual grade levels, we have a correlation chart. It's about 18 pages per grade level, and we will see, okay, our lowest, our lowest score right here in terms of percentage of questions correct has to do with 4.0A dot four. Hey, that's two-sided equations. So, let's look at, in our curriculum, how we can bulk up our instruction for two-sided equations. So, it really makes it specific. In the past, some of the deficiencies have been, do you know what? We didn't get to that topic. Taking the test April 8th is very different than taking the test May 15th. So, these are all the factors we like to talk about. So, I'm very happy that for our recent data, grades three, four, and five all look like this. We're all above the state average. And for grades six, seven, and eight, and nine, where we started with maybe 50% of our data underneath the state average, there's a significant change, and now we're, we're moving, we're shifting. I will say that the high school, the, the high school charts are, are kind of similar as well. We're around 50% underneath, and some of the grades are going up, some of the, the questions, excuse me. So, this is how, once again, we use the data specifically to really pinpoint which standards need, need some attention, and it, it's obvious that, that things have shifted. So, what are we doing to continue to move forward? You know, I have, I have here professional development, professional development, I will mention what we're specifically doing, continuing with Conquer Math, but professional development is also about taking the opportunity during the day and during our math department meetings and individual grade level meetings to talk about common goals. One of, we have, we have three kind of pushes this year continuing. We are working with students on self-assessment. An initiative for all of the math and science teachers, grades five to 12, is for students to reflect, once a marking period, on their academic behavior, their work ethic, their habits, their study habits, and really try to have them more involved in their own learning experience, and we're finding that it's making a difference. The mathematical practices is the skill set that we want all of our students to work towards. It, what, those are the things that really make a student a strong math student. We persevere, we attend to precision, we look for structure. So, this is part of the conversation, of course, math talk. We, we are moving away from a traditional environment where the teacher is talking 80% of the time, and the kids are talking 20, and we're switching it. So, we're switching that 80-20 breakdown. In terms of Conquer Math, we are sending teachers to open-ended questions, to hone in on multi-step questions, looking at rubrics, looking at how students are answering these, and really dissecting, and, and looking at different ways for students to become more comfortable with taking their responses and putting them on a computer. We have the middle school students going to Financial Literacy, a, a, I believe it's a three, three-workshop series with our Algebra I program. I'm very excited. We have a new motivation, we have, we have new teachers in grade eight and in the Algebra I position at the high school. We are leveraging their skill set to move forward. We are using increased investigation-based instruction. The eighth-grade teachers are utilizing Desmos, which is what the high school teachers are using, more manipulatives all around. Our two grade eight Algebra I teachers just spent a half-day with a Texas Instrument Consultant to learn how to utilize the calculator a lot more, so even more investigation and focus on the different tools that our students can use. And there's a lot of collaboration happening between our two eighth-grade teachers and our Algebra I teacher at the high school. So, I'm very excited, and I'm even more excited that our two geometry teachers are now joining in the fun, and all three of us are going to a five, or maybe a, a six-series workshop at Conquer Math to unwrap those standards. So, we are moving, and everyone is starting to hop on the, the Conquer Math wagon. To continue the support in K4, we have teachers going to interdisciplinary connections, literature in math, special education, and open-ended questions. And of course, we are all very, very happy to have the financial support to be able to send those teachers to the workshops, and they, they all refer to it as the math spa. They walk out feeling refreshed. We have a, a new initiative with our SGO process in, in math and with our science teachers in five to 12. Since we eliminated math, we needed some alternate options. So, we created a new tiering system, a standards-based point of approach where there's now consistency between all of the grades. For example, a sixth-grade teacher will pre-assess students with a grade five standards-based assessment, and then their post-test will be grade six standards. And we are doing that all the way up the line, so we can look at the entire spread of data as a whole, and really even further pinpoint where we need to address some, some standards. And of course, that's increased vertical and, and horizontal articulation. And I will add that a lot of the science teachers this year are using their second SGO to focus on data and measurement, which is, again, supporting our, our instruction for math. Further analysis of assessment data, Linkit, of course, we will be dabbling in this year. MobiMax is continued in grades K to eight, and at the high school, we are still using Khan Academy, Desmos, Delta Math, and multiple resources to, to further evaluate our students so that we could differentiate instruction and move forward. So, we have, we have a lot on our plates in terms of what we're doing, and I, I am excited to continue seeing this progression as the students come into the high school with an even greater foundation for the standards. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is great. I feel like we're moving in the, in the right direction.
Definitely.
As far as the, as far as the data.
Yeah. It's great.
And it's interesting to note, I think as Mr. Pearson was saying, when you follow the cohorts in the data, like when you follow somebody who starts off in fourth grade, you know, especially when you're looking at the exceeding expectations, and you see the increase from the fifth grade to the sixth grade.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's really exciting to see.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
So, so yay us, right?
Yay us.
Yay us.
And I thought the data with the whole above the state line, that was pretty cool.
That was, yeah, that was great.
So, thank you. Because data doesn't lie, you can see it's, you know?
You got to say it's there.
The numbers sometimes get a little bit blurred because you're looking at some of the numbers.
So, so much.
Right. And it's interesting to see, like in the, if you look at the spring of 17, that there's certain, you know, concepts at the bottom that, to your point, weren't even learned probably at that, right? Because they're at the, at the very bottom.
I will add this, and there is a little bit of, of shift in, in the test itself, which I'm happy about. So, if you were to look at the entire picture, you would see that not every student gets the question. So, there is, and again, this also skews the data when, when us math nerds are looking at it, we're like, but this question is saying 112 kids got it, this question is saying seven kids got it, this question is saying zero.
Oh.
So, the questions that are dead at the bottom of the line, our students weren't asked, were just stood on it.
We weren't even tested, really? Oh, that's interesting.
The ones that are just above, that's where our concern is.
Right.
You know? But this difference in the test.
So, we don't have to worry about those.
Is that this year's test, 2019, instead of seeing zero, seven, sixteen, fifty, 112, I'm only seeing like 45 and 85. There's really, there's no zeros.
Right.
There's a split. So, that's more reliable because when not all of your students are given a question, how is, how would that balance?
How's it being measured? Right, right, exactly.
So, I think the state probably recognized that in modifying some of, you know, the questions, especially because they, they honed in on the number of questions anyway.
Right.
But that's, that's something that, like I can, like I said, skews.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, sure, I looked at that and thought they just didn't answer it.
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that.
Right.
We just skipped a few.
We just skipped a few standards along the way.
Yeah, we'll get to it next year, right.
I thought, I thought it was strange that everybody skipped that one question.
Right, right.
Right, right. I will keep in mind that acknowledge that.
Yeah, no.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We appreciate your time, we appreciate you digging through the data, and this definitely is painting a really positive picture.
Absolutely.
As far as the direction that we're going in. This is great.
Thank you.
All right, move it on. Yes, we are.
Moving along.
All right, well, that's it for presentations, unless anybody asks anything else, so. All righty then. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October 8th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of September, and B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B4?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Abstain from check number 059909, yes to everything else.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B5 through B13?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to approve the application for dual use of education space. B6 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contracts with the parents of the student number listed, students listed. B7 is a motion to approve the proposal from 454 Mechanical. B8 is a motion to approve the cooperative contract for ice hockey with Passaic Valley Regional High School. B9 is a motion to approve the following parent transportation contract for the 1920 school year. B10 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Kayla Lewis, Tisch School of the Arts, NYU. B11 is a motion to approve the termination of NW Transport for the route number listed. B12 is a motion to approve the third quarter unemployment insurance for the amount listed. And B13 is a motion to approve the tuition funding for the student number listed and the amount listed. That's B13. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, I believe we have a superintendent's report this evening.
Lights, camera, action here. Once a month, I have the privilege of presenting all the good stuff going on in the district, and promoting that through our monthly newsletter, and this month is no different. So let's take a quick look at what we have here. So in my opening monologue, I talk a bit about our strategic planning process, and try to reframe that in terms of what was important, what we valued throughout that process. Talk a bit about my older brother David, who is an improved, home improvement carpenter, and that credo of measure twice, cut once. That applies in education as well, particularly in this day and age where we have a limited supply of resources, both within and outside the district. And so from there, we talk about what the district goals look like for this school year. Let's take a quick look at that. So earlier in the year, I presented to you the three-year plan, which was a bit extensive. So what I've done here in this newsletter is gone ahead and distilled it down to the 1920 district goals. So for you folks at home, and to the board, at your leisure, you can go through and take a look at the specific goals that apply for this year. And as you'll see, it really touches on all manner of things, from curriculum and instruction to professional development, of course, the one-to-one initiative, curriculum, and so on down the line. So I'm not going to go through this now, it's many, many pages long, but not nearly as long as the three-year strategic plan. So please, when you have some time, take a look through that. From there, we talk about the Friday folder, of course, the assessment calendar. It is, we are required by state law to provide that calendar to you, so this will outline the different kinds of assessments that we give that are standardized, they're all listed there, and there are approximate timelines in which they're given. This is another link to the district goals template for your convenience, and it's the same document I just referred to. So what's going on at South End, all kinds of great things. Each Friday now at South End, we have a labradoodle coming in, our therapy dog, Abigail. I was there this past Friday for her first visit, and let me tell you something, what they say is true. You bring a therapy pet into any environment, whether it's medicinal or instructional, it changes everybody's mood. On Friday, it was the fourth grades turning the barrel, and boy, I tell you, the kids had a hoot. I mean, who wanted to read to the dog, who wanted to pet the dog, who wanted to get kisses from the dog? I mean, it's just an amazing experience, all brought to South End by one of our neighbors, this young lady who owns the labradoodle, works for a private company, but she's giving back charitably to the world, and asked if she could provide 40 hours of free pet therapy. And so of course, Mrs. DiMatteo and I thought, what a great idea. So that's what we're doing every Friday at South End, and our first visit was memorable. Not to steal any thunder from North End, they got a bunch of amazing thing going on there. I mean, of course, Chromebooks have taken center stage throughout a lot of our activities. Here are some pictures of, how about a police officer, Officer Joseph Johnson, doing some wonderful community policing, visiting North End School and talking about, you know, just the do's and don'ts of, of being an elementary school student, talking about the law and good behavior. And in Ms. Lieberman's and Mrs. Bassow's class, talking about multiplying and dividing, and here they are, using manipulatives, getting their hands dirty, if you will, doing math. Other things going on at North End, how about a visit to Farmstead Estates in Ringwood, and a petting zoo? I mean, you'd show me a kindergartner who doesn't like visiting the petting zoo, and I don't know what to say. I mean, the pictures are precious, I mean, they all went home with a pumpkin, and just certainly with a smile on their face. So lots of good things going on, both in the district, and we take our classrooms on the road outside. Here we have some North End first graders, in Mrs. Scrawley's class, working on more manipulatives and talking about two- and three-dimensional geometric shapes, and as Mrs. Scrawley mentions here, things are shaping up. Look at their faces, well, not all their faces, maybe she. I think we caught her in a moment, I'm sure, Mom and Dad will appreciate, I'm going to get phone calls, I'm sure. And how about the artwork that our art teachers throughout the district, in particular, Mrs. Martin indulges our kids with? I mean, these are, this is student work, I mean, it's just, it's incredible. I had to, to include some of these pictures. And here we have our staff participating in Mrs. Martin's Literature Through Art, which is offered through Monmouth State University's Network for Educational Renewal. You may recognize some of our staff members there. They had a great time. Let's transition, oh, more art, I'm sorry, more art, I couldn't help myself, more artwork, of course, there's seasonal stuff going on here, we've got silly skeletons and all kinds of stuff here. And this one, I wanted to feature in Mrs. Mish's and Mrs. Grossman's fourth grade class, these students were, were doing something really neat, so the idea was to research states in the Northeast, and in doing so, they created these Google slides with information about that particular state. In this case, they used Flipgrid to create a presentation about, I believe the state was Connecticut. Let's see what they had to say. Factoid about Connecticut. Check this out.
Hey Sydney, did you know in order for a pickle to be considered a pickle in Connecticut it must bounce? No way, really, I actually took that out myself. Let's go.
I mean, who knew? In order for a pickle to be considered a pickle in Connecticut, it has to bounce.
Did it bounce?
That's weird.
I don't know.
Do you eat it after it bounces?
We're going to have to ask them.
Off the floor?
I mean, how cute is that? So let's use the research, shut our fingertips, and find out about Connecticut. That's what they pulled out. Why not? Why not? That's what I say. Fun stuff. What's going on in the middle school? Well, all kinds of things going on at the middle school, from STEM activities to, I mean, I just get so excited when I put this newsletter together, because the content that, that I have the privilege of witnessing and participating in, and lastly, providing to you, really just shows where we are as a district. I mean, this is hands-on stuff, it's creative, it's kids using voice and choice to, you know, work with content, not just listen to it being given to them, but rather assimilate it and apply it. It's great stuff. We, at the middle school, they had a respect week rally that Mrs. Chain put together, she did a great job, had the entire school there, we had our Panther mascot make an appearance. It was just a great time, the kids were so fired up, they sang songs led by Mrs. Gouridis and the choir. Shout out to Max Newman and Ava Jablonsky for their role as hosts. It was just a great way to start respect week, such good stuff. Here we have an interesting sixth grade activity in Mrs. Paul's ELA class. One of the things that we talk a bit about in our standards is segregation and racism, and how that's impacted American history, global history. So this activity dealt with the idea of segregation, and so read a bit about that in the newsletter, it's kind of interesting, interesting way of framing the discussion, and how we can simulate the feeling of segregation with some real easy, yet thoughtful activities. In seventh grade science, we had kids designing paper airplanes, and not just putting together paper airplanes, but rather applying the science and engineering processes of scientific inquiry to do so. I mean, using the Chromebooks to do research on the different kinds of materials, different designs, different masses of their airplanes, and the bottom line was, the plane that flew the furthest launched 20 meters, pretty good, kids had a ball. I thought this was an interesting project, I wanted to capture for you, eighth grade social studies, creating an irrigation simulation, they're doing so with these, these paper cards. The idea here was to simulate how difficult it was back in the early days of societies to achieve any kind of large-scale or societal tasks. Interesting stuff, but they all came together and created these levies. Seventh grade social studies had a great idea to create this American mosaic, using the different cultures and backgrounds of the students in that classroom, creating that flag mosaic. In ELA, another one of the requirements that we have and we embrace is relative to the Holocaust, here we're talking about the Diary of Anne Frank, and what it must have been like, or might have been like anyway, being a Jew that was forced to hide during the Nazi occupation. There's some incredibly powerful emotions that these activities conjure up. Eighth grade science, doing some real good stuff, talking about motion, speeds, using toy cars, again, manipulatives, hands-on, you know, working with the data, applying their knowledge and understanding of these concepts, just great stuff, it's exciting. What else is going on? How about the high school? We've got some sophomores working with Detective Caroline Lynch on a, demonstrating their reaction time. Of course, it's 10th grade, so they're talking about being behind the wheel, and how important reaction time is, and what being impaired or under the influence may do to that reaction time, important stuff. Interesting work going on in honor statistics, where students were, again, out of their seats, doing things, not passive learners, they're active, and they're in the process, recording data, collecting data, and how long they can stand on one leg. It's, it's simple, silly, it's fun, it gets, it gets them thinking, gets the blood flowing. And last but not least, Mr. Mangili wanted me to recognize Gianna Kaboo, this month's Student of the Month at Cedar Grove High School. Good stuff. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. So a lot going on.
Yeah.
A lot of cool stuff going on.
Good stuff.
Lot of stuff.
Thank you. All righty, moving on, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, there's a lot of S's, through S19?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from October 8th. S3 is a motion to approve submission of the 2018-19 school self-assessment HIB grades. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation for the purposes of retirement from Louis Fattali. S5 is a motion to rescind S2 on October, on the October 8th agenda, and approve the new dates for Katrina Shabab, high school student, assistance counselor, maternity leave replacement, non-tenure track. S6 is a motion to retroactively approve Carolyn Capizano, Memorial Middle School maternity leave replacement, physical education teacher. S7 is a motion to approve Melissa Lombardi, South End pre-K teacher. S8 is a motion to approve Jesse Lab, high school history maternity leave replacement teacher. S9 is a motion to approve Andrew Vanderhorne, morning backdoor entrance duty. S10 is a motion to approve the following school volunteers. S11 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S12 is a motion to approve the following pilot program and volunteer advisors. And S13 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S14 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S15 is a motion to retroactively accept the resignation of Ralph Lacronte, totally butchered that, sorry. S16 is a motion to retroactively approve the resignations of Rebecca Abrami and Maria Basile. S17 is a motion to retroactively approve Jackie Lasky, head cheer coach, and Tom Jones, assistant cheer coach. S18 is a motion to approve Sandra Haynes, substitute nurse. And S19 is a motion to retroactively approve Paige Gibson, after-school assistants. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S20?
So moved.
Second.
S20 is a motion to approve the following courses for curriculum revision for the 1920 school year. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S21?
So moved. Second.
S21 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none. Announcement of future meetings, November 12th, and then November 26th, and then it's like Christmas, and then it's year end.
Forget it.
What the heck? That's just crazy, huh? That truly is. Anyway, a lot of good stuff going on.
Lot of good stuff.
I mean, really, you know, I mean, a lot of times, we just kind of go ahead and we do our daily thing, but it's nice to pause and remember that, you know, there's a lot of exciting things going on, and we should definitely read the newsletter to learn more about that.
Yeah.